Next, we'll move on to conduct of business.
Conduct of business, 7A, receive report. Receive report and confirm date for transition to a by-district method of city elections. Consider adopting a resolution appropriating $45,000 from the general fund balance and authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with National Demographics Corporation for district digging services.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Tonight, we're going to talk about a couple of things relating to district elections, and we're going to review. Whoops, we're going to wait for the PowerPoint to get up there. Okay, we're going to review the background from last meeting, March 10, 2020. We're going to evaluate the pros and cons of transitioning to district elections in either 2020 or 2022. That was a decision that was deferred at the last meeting. We're going to address some of the questions that were raised at the last meeting and in the interim, and we're going to talk a little bit about next steps. And so those are essentially determine what is that date going to be? And then secondarily, to decide whether to retain the National Demographics Corporation, the consultant that presented at the last meeting and will be on the phone here this evening in order to answer any questions. So let's start with a little background. At the last meeting, we received a staff report regarding the options to mitigate the city's exposure to a potential California Voting Rights Act claim in attorney's fees. And what you'll remember about that is that that act requires public agencies to transition from at-large to district elections. And we also learned that receiving a letter from an attorney, which Burlingame had just done merely days before the meeting, could trigger a payment of up to $32,000 in attorney's fees. And we have actually just heard that Burlingame is actually going to end up paying that as they transition now to district elections. We also heard from the consultant at the last meeting that litigation and other court settlements could range from six to seven figures. So the financial liability, potential liability to the city was great from not having adopted a resolution of intention. So you received a detailed presentation at the last meeting from the demographer, and the city council had quite a bit of discussion about mitigating the risk and eventually adopted a resolution of intention, which does protect it and provides it with a safe harbor. And the only decision left outstanding regarding that resolution of intention was whether the transition to district elections should be in 2020, so this November, or in 2022. So let's talk about that for just a couple of minutes. And here come some of the policy issues, the pros and cons of going one way versus the other. So with respect to the consultant's work, we have confirmed that it is possible to complete all of the required steps that are required under state law. It requires five public hearings, which is quite a large number of public hearings, and perhaps especially so in these times. So we checked with our consultant, and I think he's recommended that if we are going to go in 2020, we really are going to need a much more intense and robust public outreach to get public participation remotely. Because as you can see, with the shelter in place order, we're unlikely to have large members of the public or large numbers of the public coming out to these meetings. And so in order to foster public participation at home and drawing maps online and interacting over tech, you know, with teleconferencing and so on, there's going to need to be quite a bit more public outreach if we're going to try to go in 2020. And that comes with, I think, a substantial additional expense that the consultant can tell you a little bit about. There is a little bit of good news, which is that the risk of paying attorney's fees and/or litigation for waiting until 2022 is now reduced. As maybe some of you know, the governor issued one of many executive orders recently for in response to the COVID-19 pandemic, and one of those orders extended all of the timeframes for required public hearings after an emergency specifically relating to this. So I think that if the city council did want to wait until 2022, there would be a relatively low risk in doing that. And the last policy consideration is waiting until 2022 would also allow for a more robust discussion of possible changes to a charter city, which was brought up last time, and we'll talk about a little more in just a minute, and also alternative voting mechanisms in conjunction with district elections. If we were to try to do all of those things and go in 2020, I think it's an understatement to say that would be a challenge, but the consultant has indicated that it's possible. So let's address just a couple of the questions that were raised at the last meeting. So the first one, and touching on the issue I just mentioned, which is what about considering alternative voting mechanisms? And you might remember at the last meeting, there was a gentleman from a academic think tank who's involved in voting, studying voting mechanisms of all kinds, and he had a number of intriguing proposals that the city might wish to consider. So the one thing to remember, if it wasn't clear at the last meeting, is that does not actually provide, adopting those voting mechanisms do not provide a safe harbor and do not comply with the California Voting Rights Act in and of themselves. You still have to go to district elections if you want that safe harbor. Once you've made the decision to go to district elections, or simultaneously, you can decide, okay, we want to now implement some other alternative voting mechanism. And if you want to do that, you have to change to a charter city. And that requires an election, because general law cities are not, there's no provision in state law to allow all of those various interesting voting mechanisms that we heard about at the last meeting. So those are two challenges with dealing with alternative voting mechanisms that could certainly be studied robustly for 2022, perhaps not as much, if at all, for 2020. And another question that was raised is whether the city could coordinate consultant work with the school district. So that was an interesting idea, because you think that maybe the consultant, both agencies could save some money, retain the consultant jointly, and split the cost. And we've had a discussion with the consultant about that. That's likely not going to be a feasible alternative for a couple of different reasons. First of all, is the school district boundaries are not contemporary or not co-terminous with the city's boundaries. So there's an area that's outside the city, and it excludes an area inside the city. So there's little slivers that are inside and outside, and so that is going to create a problem in any sort of, we'll just do one map and share the cost. And a second policy issue about that is that apparently the mapping rules and criteria are different for cities and school districts. And we're not aware that the school district has discussed this topic at a board meeting or has made any steps with respect to this topic. And so I think the conclusion that we can draw from this is that it would be difficult, if not impossible, and sort of not productive to have a sort of joint effort between the city and the school district on this particular topic. So what are the next steps that we're considering tonight? And there are really two. The first one is determine the date to transition to district elections. You made the decision last time, so now the question is November 2020 or November 2022. And then secondarily, to decide whether you'd like to retain NDC, National Demographics Corporation, to be your demographer for the effort. And obviously, if you're going to do it in 2020, they need to be retained right away. If you're going to select 2022, then NDC can certainly assist in planning and evaluating the alternatives, and they can certainly start that process. So with that, I don't have any further comments. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and I believe we'll have or do have the consultant demographer Doug Johnson on the telephone. Thank you.
Yes, hello, and Shlie Stilton here with me, too.
Can you repeat that, Doug?
Oh, I'm here, and Shlie Stilton, who was with me at the last meeting, is also on the line as well.
All right, I am being also informed before we open up to council that there is somebody who has, we have one for item 7A that had provided to us earlier, and so we'll go ahead and read it at this time.
From Aros Harmon, 633 Second Avenue. I do not believe it is a reasonable or responsible at this time to allocate $45,000 to immediately move forward with districts for the 2020 election. It is quite likely we will not be able to even begin a public engagement process for another few weeks due to COVID-19 crisis. If some lawyer wants to sue cities in the middle of this crisis, it seems to me that any judge or jury is going to recognize the frivolousness of that lawsuit in the current context, and we should have a valid counter suit against the lawyer to insist they cover court costs and some kind of damages for wasting the court and the city's time. We should declare our intent to adopt an election method consistent with the CVRA by the 2022 election after the current census, which also may be delayed. This, excuse me, this may be a by-district method if it is determined that it is the only method to satisfy the CVRA, or may be a proportional method if study over the next year confirms that such a method would meet the goals of the CVRA better than districts. And we should consult more experts than simply one demographer whose income depends on drawing districts to determine whether alternate methods may be suitable. The Center for Election Science has funds available to help with adopting alternate election methods, whether by district approval or proportional method, including any equipment and software upgrades the county might need to accommodate us and for voter outreach and education.
Thank you very much, Joanne, for doing that. Okay, and that was the comment that was submitted today. Now we'll open it up to council for questions and all comments. To either the, via staff here or on the phone.
Michael. Got you by one second. One, just one correction. I noticed in the packet, there was a copy of the resolution that was submitted last time, and it showed a 5-0 vote, and I wanted to correct that, because both council member Mason and myself voted no on that, so.
You're absolutely right, Councilmember Salazar, and in our haste, we did not catch that, so we apologize for that, and we'll make sure that that gets corrected.
Just for the record, in case I want to say I told you so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
And so it looks like the recommendation today is slightly different. I think there was a little bit more of urgency to approve the 2020 date the last time we met. Now it seems that, given the situation, the 22 date now is the more beneficial solution. So I think that's definitely a better approach. It's going to give us more time to consider how we want to do this. I had a question about if we decide to, well, let me take a step back. So there were a number of solutions that were mentioned last time. We had requested to sort of dig in a little deeper into some of those options, but I believe what I'm hearing is that districting is the only thing that will satisfy the CVRA.
I believe that is correct. We can have our demographer on the phone confirm that.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Salazar, could you speak up? I couldn't hear any of what you said.
I'm sorry. The question was whether the districting solution is the only solution that will satisfy the CVRA?
Oh, it's the only safe harbor. So if you go to districts, no one can sue you. If you do an alternative approach and everyone's happy with it, well, then there's no plaintiff to sue you. If someone would prefer districts over your alternative approach, then you would go to court and have to debate over which system was better. So the only way to avoid the expense of the lawsuit is to have districts. Some of these systems will work with districts, but that's the only safe harbor. The others, yes, you might win the case, but you're going to face a big challenge if any single person is dissatisfied.
So let's just assume for a second that lawsuits are not an issue, and that we just want to do the right thing, and California Voters' Rights Act is the right thing to do, and we want to comply with it. Are there alternatives to districting that satisfy CVRA the way it's written?
I'm sorry, couldn't hear the end part of that. Hold on, tell us to do what?
Could we be compliant with CVRA and not have districts?
I still can't hear you.
Can we be compliant with the CVRA and not have districts? Is there any other method that would accomplish that?
Not that would prevent a lawsuit. There might be something you could argue in court that does address the at-large system or the ability to elect, but you would not be in the safe harbor. You would have to, if any one person in the city disliked the new system, you'd have to win that lawsuit.
Okay, all right, so that clarifies the lawsuit portion of it, I guess. And are we going to get any additional information tonight regarding the move to a charter city and how that might either change what we're discussing here today, or is that something that we would just, that we would get to eventually?
So, Javon, City Manager, we don't have any additional information on what a potential charter amendment or potential effort to convert San Bruno from a general law city to a charter city would look like. We can ask Doug Johnson to comment generally on if San Bruno was a charter city, what that would allow or open up vis-à-vis elections, the election of council members.
And in terms of what the council can decide to do, so we have the power to change to a district from an at-large system by ordinance?
That's correct.
Okay. And do we also have the authority to add additional council seats?
No, you do not.
Okay.
Not for a general law city. If you go to charter, the charter can determine, you can say, we want to go to seven, nine, or have other additional seats. But a general law city is required by state law to have five seats.
I thought the state law said we had to have at least five. Isn't the language at least five?
Yeah. This is like, Mark, it will actually allow seven or nine. It's just those three options.
Stand corrected.
All right, so then it would be within our authority as part of our plan to say if we found a map that made more sense with seven, that we would have also the authority to do that? And I'm wondering, once we start looking at scenarios, and this is to the consultant, is the realm of possibilities for us going to be tied to four districts and an at-large mayor? Or are we going to look at different scenarios that include a different number of council people and potentially a rotated mayor? What do we get for the money?
Yes, so once you kick off the process and start the hearings, we have to do two hearings just to gather info, and then after those first two hearings have been held, we can start drafting maps. And yes, we can do whatever scenarios you want us to look at. We've done that fairly often.
Okay, thank you.
Can I, I think it's possible to clarify. The council right now has the ability to look at adding additional council seats, right, going from five to seven to nine. And what I think I heard Doug saying is if the city council embarked on that process, you can look into changing the number of council seats. I think it's important to point out that going from a directly elected mayor to a rotational mayor is something only the voters in San Bruno can decide. And so that was part of your initial question. I just want to point that out.
Right, and one thing I was thinking about is if we were to say, okay, so even if we stick with five, and then we have, we have the five districts, we would have four, basically four districts based on our current configuration.
Yeah, based on current law in San Bruno, which has a directly elected mayor, if the city council wanted to look at districts, we would, let's say today, at your current status, it would be four districts and a directly elected mayor. If you wanted to go to seven council members, it would be six districts and a directly elected mayor. The same scenario for nine, eight districts and a directly elected mayor. It's the only way the city can change having a direct, you have to put it on the ballot.
Right, okay, thank you. And we also have an additional comment on item 7A, which Joanne has and will read for us, and thank you for doing this.
So this is a comment from Plymouth. The Waving of the Brown Act, with the Waving of the Brown Act and allowing meetings to take place virtually like this one, does it still make sense to cancel all meetings other than city council? It seems like we should keep as much city business running as possible if we can do it safely. I appreciate all the hard work being done by the city council and staff. It is reassuring to hear that so much preparation has been made, and so many people are working hard to keep the city as safe as possible. I still think that dividing the city into districts is a bad idea and will result in worse representation for a lot of minority communities, not better. But even if we do have to do it, we should not be doing it now at a time when almost none of the city residents have a chance to speak out about it, and when the city has much more pressing problems to deal with in terms of the COVID-19 pandemic. We need to have all our resources focused on keeping the city as safe as we can from this disease, which threatens both our health and our economy.
All right, Michael's done for now. Other my colleagues?
I have some questions.
Linda.
Yeah, so this, I'm sorry, what was his name?
Doug Johnson.
Doug Johnson. So, Mr. Johnson, I'm actually looking at your presentation at the League of Cities, wherein you lay out the process for changing over to add district elections. In particular, when you talk about the safe harbor provision, the safe harbor provision begins with receiving the demand letter, and then my understanding from your presentation is that you calculate 45 days from the date of the receipt of the demand letter. Then you have the 45 days to decide which way to go. Then you have another 90 days before an action can actually begin, a lawsuit can begin. Then the second step is you place the matter on a closed session with your city council. The third step is that you engage a demographer, which would be someone like yourself. Once the demand letter has been received, then you would ask for two things. You'd ask for an analysis on the racially polarizing voting record before transitioning to the district-based elections to see if they're necessary. And then the districting, then the districting maps would go through essentially the city attorney, the city attorney for purposes of work product. And then lastly, the city council would retrieve the election results for the city's most recent elections. And specifically, I think the example that's given, I'm going to just read it, because it makes a lot of sense, which is that, for example, with some cities' perspective, plaintiffs cited the absence of minorities on the city council as evidence of racially polarized voting. Because of perspective, plaintiff relied on surnames to determine whether minority candidates were elected to city council. Plaintiff's allegations fail to account for minority candidates who do not necessarily have minority surnames, such as a minority candidate who changed his or her last name after marriage. Reviewing the city's election history, the fact check, to fact check the allegations in the demand letter helps the city council make an informed decision. So I feel like none of this, as of right now, has been followed, and it appears that it's, that the safe harbor provision could apply if the city of San Bruno did receive one of these letters that we've heard about so much.
So that is the process you follow if you get a letter? That was the whole purpose of that, is what to do when you get a letter. And the goal of that analysis is to decide how strong a case the city has if it wishes to fight the letter. And so that's kind of a get ready for battle, we're going to go to the barricades and spend whatever it takes to fight it approach. What I think the council's done through its resolution at the last meeting is decide to get ahead of the curve, avoid the $30,000 that you have to pay to anyone who sends you a letter, even if you don't fight it, and just adopt the resolution to make the change. So that's why we bypass those steps, is you're ahead of the curve and not reacting to a letter.
Right, but none of these steps say anything about having to pay $30,000. It appears that there's at least 100 and 35 days that the council would have to make an informed decision on its actions. And just to reiterate my position, two weeks ago was that I wanted to ensure that we received all the information prior to handing over $45,000 to your firm to save $30,000. And it feels like, in what I'm reading, if we did receive a letter, we would still have time to make a decision without spending $30,000.
That's not right.
Okay, that's what I'd like to clarify.
That's not the case, and I think the, I mean, Mr. Johnson can address that as well. Once you get the letter, then you're on the hook for paying up to $32,000. That's exactly what happened at Burlingame.
Is that right, Mr. Johnson? Just because I'm looking at your presentation, and that doesn't say that.
The $32,000 is paid to the attorney who sends you the letter. You'd have to hire the demographer, and actually, that cost would be higher, because you're talking about doing a liability analysis in addition to going to district elections.
So I mean, at this point, we haven't received any information on the city's most recent elections to prompt us or to trigger us to move forward, to say that we have, you know, that there's racial polarizing going on in San Bruno. We haven't had a closed session on this item. We haven't received much more than the presentation that you provided two weeks ago, which was how to transfer over to district elections. And so I'm just trying to figure out exactly what information we're relying on that is prompting us to move forward outside of a possible letter out of how many cities in California?
Sure, council member, let me take that. One of the things that we said two weeks ago when this was brought up is that this item was jointly being placed before the city council by the city clerk, the city manager, and the city attorney, not to in any way push the city council towards district elections, but to allow the council to make an informed decision and to avoid the possibility of paying $30,000, like a lot of our neighboring jurisdictions in the county have, and like a number of cities in California has, because of the prevalence of attorneys going around with the advent of state law to essentially just give a letter and collect $30,000 and then have the city launch this effort. What we wanted to do was to be proactive and give the city council the option to adopt a resolution to provide protection, so no one can send the city a letter, thus turning what would be, if the city council went forward now or in 2022, a $40,000 effort into a $70,000 plus effort, because you'd have to pay your demographer in either event plus the $30,000. And I think what we also heard from Doug Johnson is that in that case, when you do get a letter, you'll also be doing additional analysis on risk of lawsuit and mitigation. And so your cost may very well be more than $40,000. And so the city council took an action at the last meeting that provided protection, and the decision that's before the council is, do you want to do that in 2020 or 2022? I think the other point that's worth making is, yes, COVID-19 has sort of changed the landscape on everything, and we're in a different place that we are today than we were two weeks ago. That said, what you also heard from staff is... That said, what you also heard from staff is, should the city council want to proceed with 2020? We can look into ways that that can occur. We will not be the only city that is going through a district election process, and so people are going to have to figure out how to do community engagement in this sort of new normal, where you're having more remote participation, and you think of potentially setting up kiosks or various other areas to get engagement. And so we're still here tonight with that question before the council is. In order to sort of be the most prudent and protect the city financially, does the city council want to sort of do this analysis in 2020 or 2022? And really, it's not a decision to have district elections. I think one of the public comments said that we shouldn't be here talking about forcing district elections upon the city. That's not at all what is proposed. What is talked about is, does the city council want to launch a public engagement process that is at minimum five meetings to start to have that conversation with the community? And then at the end of the day, the decision is always the city council's, whether you go to district elections or not, sort of legal risk aside.
So then will there be any point where we hear about anything other than district elections?
Absolutely. I think what we heard last time from yourself, and I think some other council members, is the desire to look into alternative election methods, being that proportional election or districts with another election methodology. What was said then, and I think Mark mentioned in his presentation, is that whenever the city council decides to launch the public engagement, we can look at alternative methods. Those that are district election, those that are district election plus something else, and those that may not be district election at all, and run that analysis on if it provides a safe harbor and what the risks are of that. But absolutely, I mean, what's before you is, when do you launch that sort of analysis and public engagement?
Okay, and then, and so, and then just a follow-up with Doug. So I want, I just want to make sure I'm really crystal clear on this $30,000 because, again, the safe harbor section in your presentation does give an entire process prior to any funds being given to an attorney. It seems like a lawsuit can't begin for, like I said, about 135 days. So of the cities that you've worked with, how many have actually had to pay $30,000, maybe percentage-wise?
Well, since the $30,000 and the 135-day provisions are written in law, it's true that any jurisdiction that gets a letter, unless they prevail in court, and no one has yet, they will have to pay at least a $30,000 letter. Some have not, simply because some of these lawyers send out so many letters that they lost track of who they'd sent letters to, and they have a certain window where they have to demand payment. So there's a handful of cities that the lawyer was just late asking for money, so they didn't have to pay.
Right, and.
But outside of that mistake, all of them that got letters had to pay either, up to the $32,000 that the lawyer demanded, or had to pay litigation fees in the six and seven figures.
And that was prior to the 135 days?
Yes, yes. At the end of 135 days, you, the plaintiff's attorney can file a lawsuit, in which case you're instantly in the six figures of these.
Okay, thank you. That's what I wanted clarification on. Thank you.
Sure.
Other questions or comments from council?
Through the chair.
Laura.
I'll make this brief because we've kind of been going around and around a lot here and a lot of questions, which are good questions, but I just simply have four statements. Number one, we didn't plan, or did we budget $45,000 for this? And we already have a tight budget. Number two, there's a lot more pressing issues, I think, in the city that we should be focusing on this year. And number three, thankful for, I guess, governor's order that there has been a reduced risk. And so thank you for that, Mark, as well. And number four, I think, let's see what happens with the other lawsuits. You know, there are some pending litigations, and who knows if things change and that at 2022, we'll be looking at a different situation, and we have more options. I think we represent the city very well. I don't think that going through a process to try to push this through this year is going to make any sense. But I do hear the concern from the city clerk, the city attorney, and the city manager. In the presentation a couple of weeks ago, 43% of the communities are already gone to districting. We know that five already, and a sixth one, including Burlingame, will probably head that direction. It is coming, something needs to change, but I think we can wait until 2022.
Through the chair.
Marty. So I agree. It's the law. The timing is not best, but to try 2020, for various reasons, with the census coming out, with the COVID-19 going on, and trying to get a rush product out. I believe with the additional protection, it's not a, and maybe the city attorney or our consultant could answer, it's not, the governor's order isn't a guarantee that we're not going to get in a little bit of trouble. But nonetheless, in 2022, we'll be able to figure this out. And prior to that, we could also look at district elections and look at a rotating mayor. And we could talk about those that are priority-setting meeting. So I'm in favor of moving forward for 2022 districting.
Any other comments, Vice Mayor? Okay, so what I'm getting is, it seems like, I'm not quite sure, Michael, but that 2020 seems that nobody wishes to proceed with the current environment that we're in, the economic element, et cetera, on community outreach. But then it would be 2022. I think that's the first thing that I'm grasping from my colleagues, whether they wish to even look at it or not. But at least, if it were to go forward, it'd be 2022. But then the other thing, too, it's about the retaining the NDC. And to me, if we, in my opinion, if we are going to be going forward and saying as a team, we're going to look at this at 2022, go ahead and do the outreach. In my world, obviously, we're not moving forward, but I would not even commit, in my mind, commit to this time, to this particular. Mr. Johnson, it's no disrespect, but I think we have opportunity and time to look further and just to look at a more broader base, and then make that decision when the time comes appropriately. Any other thoughts or comments?
Through the chair.
Laura.
On that comment, I think the circumstance was, who can do it and get it done this year? And so that limited the opportunities for those companies. So I think when you're not pressured with that, then there might be other companies out there at different costs. I'm not sure. I did actually spend some time and look on the website and reach out some information, and I find them to be very reputable. I find the presentation that we had two weeks ago to be very reputable. I feel that they're very knowledgeable, so it's not to say that they're not the right company, but I don't think that we need to decide that right now either.
No, and no way am I saying that, just those are our two questions, 2022, 2020, and retain. So I just wanted to make sure that we are moving down a direction that we have consensus or not consensus on.
So if I may, Mr. Mayor would recommend a motion, if there is a majority to go to 2022 elections, so that, district elections, so that will be clear in the record, and we'll have that in the minutes.
Understood.
Through the chair.
Laura.
Like to motion that we, do we move to 2022 for district elections or discussion decision?
Second.
Motion made in second to go ahead and look toward 2022 if we were going to go to district elections after going to community outreach and public input, et cetera, and then making a decision on that time. Is that, summarize that, okay?
Yes.
Okay. Marty, is that okay on your second?
Yes.
Okay, motion has been made in seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
I'm sorry, we, I think we need to, was there, did all five members vote?
I voted aye.
Was there any noes?
No.
There's one no, correct?
For the record, that's Councilmember Mason. Thank you very much.
It was hard to hear. Thank you for clarifying. So we have a 4-1, Mason, no. Okay, anything else on that topic? Javon, anything else? Mark? Okay.